Raise your hand in the chat or raise your hand here. I will call on you and you can make a statement. Please include in both methods your name and address.
Thanks. My pleasure, ladies and gentlemen. My pleasure, ladies and gentlemen. Of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I move to approve the agenda as presented. Some discussion. Seeing there none, all those in favor.
Aye.
Opposed? I move to approve the Board of Selectmen's Special Meeting Minutes for November 1st, year 2022. Discussion.
I have one regarding 6.1. Beverly said that the number has been around since 2002. It was the 48% reimbursement. Is that 2012 that was written? Is that correct here?
We'll have to look at it. I thought she said.
I think that goes back to when the school grant program was written.
Okay.
No.
I wasn't sure if that's why I was.
Right, right.
I don't recall 2002. Who was talking about pressure then? I thought she said.
No, I think it's school grants in general. School construction grants.
Okay.
The formula to reimburse was right around this.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
But I actually have something. The next two paragraphs down from that. William O'Brien asked to have a second opinion on the need to upgrade service panel.
Question mark.
S Everett said no. I'm not sure.
He said no.
I said no. I don't think I actually put it that way. I think it said William O'Brien asked if we had to have a second opinion. Or if. Asked to have a second opinion on me. And I don't think I said no. I don't think there's a question mark. I don't know why the question mark is there.
What should it say?
You should probably say. On the need to upgrade the service panel, period. He asked to have a second opinion. I don't think I would have said no to that. I'll take 20 opinions, but I mean. Can we go back and please, please check that, okay?
Okay.
Okay. That's that. Anybody else? Other points? All those in favor? Corrections needed or to be looked at? Those. Audience, it says. Hey, anybody in the chat, Mark, can you hand up?
No way.
Excellent, old business. Arca funding, project discussion authorization for the construction of DPW office building and all associated work and site improvements. I. Asked Jason to take a look at the building, look at it, rework it, and see what he can come up with. He called me in a couple of days and believed that we can do the building as it was laid out, same floor plan. With $298,824. I will tell you, there's very little wiggle room in there at all. But if. If it comes to we have to save some money on something like painting. I'll go paint. You know, I think they deserve. They deserve this. I went down there afterwards. I talked to some of the personnel. I looked around. I got up there, looked around at the office, and I looked around at the break room up there and. I think we need to put this through for the welfare, well-being of our workers. Other comments, discussion. Is this figure realistic? I think it is. I think that I've had discussions with other. I have some questions for Jason.
He's on. Have a specific question.
I don't have that kind of. Jason. You're on mute, come off mute. There's a lot of numbers on that bottom number.
That's his number. Just dropped a few.
Hi, do I have you?
Yes, so Jason, the question is, is this number realistic?
The number is very realistic, but has. It only has 5% contingency left in it. And normally when we do projects, we like to see 10% contingency. But the actual numbers are very realistic to get the project done, provided that everything comes in on. You know, right at budget. So it could actually be 5% high, but it could also be about 5% low. Because a lot of times we like to see 10% contingency instead of five.
Okay. Other questions for him?
So some of these items, like particular in the first section A in site work where, like for example, clearing. I presume that zero because that's something that the charge.
Clear. Public property.
What about the well?
That we won't be using, we'll be using the existing water supply and just running pipe. That's kind of that utilities line item is to get power and water from the existing building over to the new building.
Any others?
And actually, so these bids that you have, are they bids that you went up in how long would you say they're good for the pricing?
Well, the pricing, the ones in yellow are actually. Those are already priced out to a T. We actually have written quotes on those numbers that are in yellow. And those prices are good, period. I don't know if we were to wait till next year, whether they would hold them. But nobody's come back and said that they were going to change their pricing at the moment. And most of the pricing has been gotten within the last three months. So I don't suspect that any pricing changes would be a problem at this time. By the time we get the drywall, which is not 100% priced yet. That, you know, if drywall goes down, then it'd be good for us, but drywall could go up too. My take and my read on what's happening in the building industry is most things are going to be fairly level for a long while at this point. If not, they might even drop just slightly. But probably not by much because I don't see energy dropping. And energy is the driving cost of most of the, most of building-related expenses.
What else? Okay, so. I move to approve the construction of DPW office building and all associated work and site improvements for the cost of $298,824. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Um, thank you. Jason, back.
Thank. Thank you. Good night.
Good night.
So the next. Next item we have is for the. To set a town meeting to appropriate the funds. Well, here's two ways of doing it. If the funds are taken from the general fund for the HVAC, AWING, for bids, spec, and design, we've got a. There's no. We've been told there's a wide range of what it could cost to do all the bid specs and design. We need to move forward. So we'd have to set a town meeting for it because it could be upwards of $25,000, $35,000, $40,000 for the bid specs and design. That's what I'm told. We could take it out of the ARCA money. And we do not need a town meeting for that, am I correct? Or we could go to the general fund and we would need a town meeting for that. So I'm asking for thoughts before I make a motion.
I'll just tell you right now, you're down to $280,800 of ARCA.
Now, today we applying for a grant for this project. So. Do, so I guess you still need to know, get a bidding, we're having a grant, just. I guess I'm like, how. There could be a number of ways that we approach this. So are we buying into a particular way in as we do this? I mean, I see it, there's, I don't know. I mean, I don't know a whole lot about HVAC systems, but if you look at something like the split units, they take the mold out of the air and do the same thing. It would probably be a lot less. So I guess I don't, what, how do we decide where to go with this? So hiring engineers. What other schools the state recommends, certain plan, all that.
Judy, I am so uncomfortable with this whole process. I agree with you. Okay.
We can assess exactly where the moisture is coming from. If it's coming from the outside and we pull it away. Have we done that?
Yes, with two companies. So the school two years ago contracted.
BBH.
BBH. Did an extensive study, came up with a $5 to $6 million solution for the whole school. And then through.
Why for the whole school? No, I'm talking about where is the water coming from?
So that was for the whole school. What happened this year was AWING had to evacuate six classrooms in the lower level to moisture mold. So the compromise was let's bring in Titan Energy who works, does a lot of contract work through Control Air. Had them take a second look. They came in with their consultants, looked at the AWING electrical.
You're not understanding what I'm asking. A lot of times water comes into a building, like my house, from an outside source. And before you do anything, the first thing you've got to do is get rid of the water on the outside of the building. It doesn't do any good to do that if there's still water or spraying or pooling outside that's seeping in and condensing on the walls and causing an issue. Maybe that's all we need to do is get some drainage around the outside. Has anybody assessed where the moisture is coming from?
I know Mike Sylvester is aware of all the things they've done to the school to reduce moisture from coming into the outside. Whether it was done correctly, I cannot answer that.
Or it could just be it's been so humid. My house gets so moldy with this humidity. That's why I got these AC things. So it could be just, it just stays there. There's no place for it to go. There's poor ventilation. But it could be what you're saying too. I don't know.
And that's what I'm asking is, has anybody done that?
Well, what the consultants have looked at is to help to. Clean the air, not just heat it and cool it, which the HVAC system would do.
But you're talking about people who make a profit from it. I'm talking about an independent person that doesn't make a profit off selling us something.
Well, they won't make a profit if they're not hired. The more that they're just.
I know, but still, but she got a point. It's an independent evaluation.
Well, that's what the school did when they hired BBH. They were paid for a solution.
Okay, so like when we did the library, I, for instance, we did the library and they paid for an architect to come up with this grand plan. The grander it is, the more money he makes. Because he gets a cut, percentage cut of the design. As opposed to saying, draw me something I'll pay you this much.
Well, this, what we just enacted tonight are town meetings to create a building committee who's willing to charge to do this whole analysis. And work with consultants or hire outside consultants.
Well, should we wait and see what they say before we do this bidding process?
Well, then you'll walk away from the bid. What the state has done to us is by one, giving us eight weeks to pull us together, which is ridiculous. They forced us to accelerate what would normally take a year. So that we could at least apply for a grant. If we don't get the grant, we're back to square one.
But if we're spending 200% of what we need to spend, then the grant is moot anyway.
But we haven't spent.
I'm just saying, if we only need to spend $500,000 to take care of everything and we get a grant for a couple million, I mean.
This is, this is, this is exactly what I said in the office today between you and I during the discussion. I said, I don't feel like we've had anybody. Now, I have. Moisture in my basement, like everybody does when it's below gray. The water comes through the walls of the floor because it's vaporized, it's seeped through there. And I run a dehumidifier which is a dry. Okay, that's number one. Number two, I also now dehumidify, air condition, and heat my house with the splits. So that's another thing. And so I did say to you today, have we asked somebody like Nutmeg or whoever does the large ones or the small ones? What it would take to do the rooms individually or two rooms? We do this building on two large compressor units. So we could do two, at least two rooms on one compressor unit for each one, for each two rooms. And that's a lot cheaper than $1.8 million. And it could do the job of dehumidifying, heating and cooling the classrooms, which would take care of the environmental as the mold. Yes, we're not getting the added benefit of cleansing the air, purifying the air as this system does. But I think it, the, I know last time I was outside, the air was beautiful. Yeah, the air was beautiful. And. A system like the splits and. And what I saw today on the paperwork you showed, the summary that Titan Energy sent us on the bottom was the manufacturer of that equipment. We use these manufacturers. And one of them. I'm going to tell you, in the heating HVAC industry, they probably are the king for homeowners and businesses, Mitsubishi. They do these things. So Mike, again, and I hear it here, the frustration, we don't, we haven't done our due diligence.
I'd rather walk away from the grant and get way more than we need or get, you know, just as a.
Well, how much was the grant?
We don't even know. We don't, it's 40%. We don't even know if. We're going on the historic percentage of 48%.
So the good news is we're still moving forward to apply for the grant. However, we don't have to tell them by December 1st what we're coming up with. We won't even have that by then. So.
Can we get more information from them?
Well, we're desperately trying to work with the board of ed to accomplish that. We're efforting it. So I think who we put on this building committee will be key. I think we need to make sure we have really good building committee that can address all these questions we're having. Because we haven't written the bids back. We have, all we know is we have a humidity problem in it, that's all. And we have a really expensive proposal for $5 to $6 million for this.
Which, which if part of first step is to appropriate funds for someone to create bid specs is. Is the market out there where we can have some firm who provides specs and basically they're out of the whole bid.
But it doesn't just structure up. That would be good.
Right through, right through conflict of interest where they basically write specs on our behalf, yet they basically taken themselves out of bid.
Here's the feedback. I can do it. Give me $5, I'll do it. We want you to heat, cool, and dehumidify rooms below gray so no mold grows in the room.
Now, one aspect that both consultants said is the electrical upgrade is maxed. You have to put in a minimum of $350,000 to upgrade your electrical system to handle.
Yeah, so we've got a second opinion on that too.
Right.
No. No, wait, that was.
Two consultants said, and walked through that school system and said, you're maxed, you have no more capacity.
What else were consultants?
H, no, BV. The.
BBH?
BBH and.
Control.
Control air systems. Which, that's what they do.
Fire chief, you just consulted, they're doing.
No, they also do maintenance.
Fire chief has his.
I will.
And I don't know what BBH means.
Chief, can you wave your hand if you're going to weigh in on this? Because I can't.
I, like I said, I don't know if I can weigh in. I just wanted to give you guys an informational point that the town of Andover recently put in split units in their elementary school. If that you guys wanted to get some input from them.
Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
That's fine. So, yeah, I get it. You see, we're, you're asking us for. The paper is asking us to appropriate money for bid specs. And we don't even know truly what we want.
Now, can we ask, the word of ed isn't even here, to explain what all this process.
They want a solution.
They could have been here to explain it.
So they don't have to evacuate their classrooms. And it happens.
We need a problem. There's a problem for sure. And I think we should address it. It's just how, and I don't understand why.
And we basically have to winter.
Okay, so here's, yes, here's the thing. We went through the process, we're going to apply for the grant. The good news is we don't have to give them the number of what the grant we're looking for. This $35,000, I would rather be called in. Let's go talk to Andover.
Well, you could establish the funding, just as I was saying, but we don't, we haven't contracted with anybody yet.
No. My concern there is we say we're going to go for A or ARCA money.
Right.
And all of a sudden, it's earmarked for that. We don't use it for that. And somebody said, hey, you didn't use it for what you, you said you were going to, we're taking it back. I don't know, but stranger things have just. And the second thing is we go to the town and do a town meeting or something and ask for it out of the general fund. And people go, well, how about this? And we stand up there and go, I don't know, I don't know, I don't know, I don't know, just in line faith, that's. It's a little concerning to be candid. I don't want to be embarrassed because we don't have. I don't want to be embarrassed because we don't have the numbers.
And that's, my huge frustration is that we've been killing ourselves trying to get numbers and it is, okay, hard.
So perhaps you don't do it if you don't have numbers.
Yeah, and it's not what we're purchasing.
And that's what setting this thing where you have to have all these things in place for the two-month window is also possible.
We're all set to go forward with the grant.
Yeah.
We are, we are. Okay, I'm done with this right now. I'm not even, I'm not going to ask for any money. I'm going to get involved, okay? We're going to, we're going to work together if you want. Everybody, what are we looking for? But I know kind of what we're looking for, an answer, and it's very easy to me.
Why don't you make a motion that if, because for the bid itself, the grant, it requires you to have bid specs, at least in the process. Could you make a resolution that you will fund bid specs? Once we determine. What requirements are?
Well, for Dan.
I mean, just something saying, we're willing to fund the bids. We're not. We decide we finally feel what we want, we'll get hired and then solve the right bid specs.
Great, we're not putting a price on it, right?
Right, don't put a number. Say the fourth cycle will fund.
So I don't have to set a town meeting and I assume they don't need ARCA funds now?
Well, you. Since it's not in the budget, you would have to use ARCA or set a town meeting. So I would just say we will, we will. Use our ARCA funds to provide. Financing for this back once we hire a consultant to determine.
There's no number there.
No, except we don't know what, we don't know what it costs. I'm just, I'd just like a resolution to have.
Can we say that? A grant?
We're making a resolution that we will, we would fund it.
We have a certain dollar amount that triggers a town meeting, so we're hesitant to.
It's, no, it's not that.
The ARCA money won't trigger.
ARCA money won't trigger a town meeting, but the number is really too much to take out of contingency because we wipe ourselves out. So really, it's either town meeting or ARCA.
What's the, what's the dollar amount for town meeting? I always forget, 15? What's, does, I don't know. When are you for general fund?
Town meeting, anytime you're hitting general fund, you need a town meeting. If you hit contingency, you only need four second and five half. And it might be a dollar, it might be over. There is a dollar.
I think it's 15.
It was 10, I think it got changed.
I think it's 15.
It may have gotten changed with the.
The charter revision. I can't, I never, I was on the committee, I can't remember. I thought it was 15. Could even be 20.
Very good, Christopher.
Look it up, look, it should be in there. In the book. Yeah, I don't know what the, we don't know what the assessment is and we don't know what we're doing.
We don't need, we don't, we don't need this right now, correct?
I don't know if the, the grant requires at least a resolution that you, you'll fund it.
When is the grant, when's all the grant stuff due by?
December 1st.
December 1st. So we have to.
Next week, we're writing the grant.
We have to do this, this meeting, if that's required.
Correct.
This irritates me.
Well, we're very irritated.
It just doesn't seem right.
No, and we don't know enough about it.
Whether it's our tax dollars from the town of Columbia or our tax dollars from the state or tax dollars from the federal government, it's still our tax dollars.
And we don't know what we're getting on. What the bids, you don't know what they're doing, you don't know how they assess it. I think it's a given, they need something.
Oh, we got to do something.
They got to do something over there.
Right, so it's on us to form a committee, right? So do we take the initiative?
We've already, we've already spiked a move to allow them to sort of put a selection committee.
Right, but we know, we pick.
We can approve it.
Oh, oh.
We approved the selection.
We.
I thought we were the ones to.
Authorized to appoint, we.
We are.
We appoint the members of the four of them to the committee.
Yeah, that's us.
Right.
A volunteer who part of it, unless there's other people left. Oh, you know, okay. The town of Columbia hereby establishing a building committee, but the board of selectmen shall authorize who we appoint. So give me anybody who's not on Five Pack, right?
Yeah.
Is that correct, Mark?
Yeah, Five Pack members can't be.
We have some great builders we have.
I know, that's certainly not my skill.
I mean, I'm good at, I'll be moving our shop, so I can't connect to someone.
Would there be a limitation on the committee as to how many board of selectmen members can be served on it?
I didn't see any details on what's actually made. Okay, we can't be up.
Here it is, right here. And then, of course.
Two dark ones.
He would be good.
He's been a contractor for us.
Nice guy.
Just real soft.
That's the state.
He's a cyclist. We see one all the middle. Just retired, he used to, he built that bridge down in. Milford. Milford. Of course, he was part of that designing. I can reach out to you.
Do you live in town?
Yeah.
He can build a bridge.
I think you need people.
The Sikorsky Bridge, maybe?
Yes.
It's so, no, no, that was the one that was, uh.
You know, we have the grant, yeah.
Original study, and we do have class estimates. Bid specs doesn't say that it's required.
Alright, so we're gonna move on to new business.
So, I'm sorry, I missed that, we don't.
So.
Six point three.
Oh, yeah. You do need a, at least. A resolution to, that you promise you'll have a referendum by February twenty eighth.
I promise, okay, I moved to, I understand, we talked about this, alright. I moved to adopt the resolution reflecting the board's intent to set a town meeting authorizing appropriation of the town's. Or portion of the Board of Ed HVAC A-Wing project and electrical upgrade to be adjourned. Adjorned to a referendum before February twenty eighth, twenty twenty-three. So the bottom line on this is, we have to.
In January, have to set a town meeting to adjourn the referendum. And in theory, you'd be comfortable by January with all the answers.
Uh, so please get us a list of people you would like us to call about being on a committee. The building committee. Okay. Any more discussion? This is what we can do, all those in favor? More time. It's the most. The tribal meeting. Wednesday, December twenty-first. Before I do this, that would be good to everybody, Wednesday, December twenty-first. Yeah, I moved to set a tri board meeting for Wednesday, December twenty-first, twenty twenty-two, at seven P M. Hold it in here, in, in.
Probably in here, because it'll adjourn for five pack meetings, so make a giant square.
In discussion? All those in favor? Regarding our dedication for the annual report. Please submit your. Exemplations for the annual report. Now, when we do that for people, I'll tell you, they're very. Over the years, I've delivered a couple of the books to the people who were honored. Meant a lot to them, so. Uh, we're doing nearby.
Twenty-first, December twenty-first, meeting.
Or the tri board meeting could be the twenty.
For twenty.
Thank you. Holiday schedule. It's in here.
Something we haven't addressed is June nineteenth, Juneteenth, that's last year we. We helped, because we weren't sure if it would actually become a national holiday, and it did. Well, I polled the re, the employees last year and said. If the board of selectmen hold you to fourteen holidays, what do you want to give up, and they said, none. So at the moment. Um, some towns, we, we looked all around the area, there were two towns that are honoring Mansfield in Manchester.
The town offices are closing, um, but other towns aren't saying that their town offices are closing, but they are celebrating.
With programs?
Yes, yes.
So you're saying we don't have to, um, take it as a holiday?
You don't have to take it as a day off holiday.
Right, there's different ways of honoring. Um, like, not everyone thinks better day off.
Mansfield did not. That's probably what they did instead of Juneteenth. Because they went to school, my Veterans Day, granddaughter in school.
Some towns gave up Columbus Day, some towns gave up President's Day.
Actually, I think the schools were in, but the town offices were closed in Mansfield.
Are they screaming for it, Juneteenth? They're going out of the year, that's my recommendation. Um, honestly, unless you take Columbus Day, but it's now called Indigenous Peoples' Day.
Not, not officially though, is it? Oh, that's what I keep hearing.
Yeah. It's what shows up.
Yeah, you take a look at every one of these days, which one, which one are we, who are we not gonna offend, when they say we're not doing that? Good Friday, I mean, really? I'm gonna hold these days of the year. I like it.
I mean, personally, if we were to do anything, I, I would think, I have a program that people. Understand and appreciate the meeting of the day, I would think, you know, they still would come, but at least they would understand it versus just another. Pay day that, you know, some may not understand and appreciate.
I tell you, take off Veterans Day, because then somebody, some people might show up if we forced them to on the town. Get all the town employees out there, required. Alright, we okay, we're just leaving it, ride another year? To make a motion to approve the holiday schedules, twenty twenty-three schedule is written here. Any other discussion? All those in favor? Uh, board selectman meeting dates.
Yeah, we, we make sure we do that again.
So what's, when's election at?
So it's supposed to be the first Tuesday of November, unless it's the first. It can't be on the first day of the month. Alright, fine, I forgot.
So you see, July, we have back-to-back weeks, because of the four.
Right. A lot of times you cancel that.
Yes.
Really, do we want January second?
I'm back at work on January second.
Wish you'd have come first. Everybody's good with January second?
Yeah.
Okay, move to approve the twenty-three board of selectmen meeting schedule. All those in favor? Hey, we got some action on the lake. First one is application for construction of a structure over the lake, uh. The Bonnades, Brian Bonnades rebuilt and replaced the existing three wooden docks and a boathouse. Still not worded correctly. Three windows. I move to approve the Brian Bonnades' application to rebuild and replace the existing three wooden docks. Eliminating one, correct, is putting that in there. Eliminating one of the current four. And. The rebuild of boathouse.
He's eliminating dock number one.
The boathouse.
Boathouse is supposed to exceed eighteen.
At one thirty-four, A Route eighty-seven, Columbia, Connecticut. With recommendations that have been set forth in our met. For Elmac. Yeah, he has four docks here, he's taking one out. The other one is actually. It's eighteen feet now, it's gonna remain eighteen feet where he has the boathouse. The, I don't know if they're adding anything to that boathouse, I think they're just, they are putting a small walkway for safety reasons along the boathouse. But, uh, other than that, should all be staying the same. And Elmac says they're good to go. Talk to. My concerns. Any discussion? All those in favor? I move to approve John Thayor Doran's application to repair a seawall at seven lower Woodland Terrace, Columbia, Connecticut. Followed recommendations. Set forth. And approved by Elmac.
This is just repairing a big crack on stage, it doesn't really need it.
I'll stare at the lake wall on big stairs.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Always thank you. And, that to be outdone, I move to approve. Woodland Terrace Association's application for dock repair at six lower Woodland Terrace. Columbia, Connecticut, according to recommendations set forth. Met, uh. And approved by Elmac. Met need approved, um. So the association has a dock down there, huh?
Yes, and it, the person pulling it from there was John.
Any discussion? Right, appointments. We picked up some really good people in the parkers works.
Yes, uh, we do agree.
I move to appoint Fred Benarson. Benaric? Okay, we're just gonna go roll with it, as tree ward. Benarson, Benarson, yeah. As a tree ward, uh, primary tree ward or assistant.
We have two tree wards, um, actually, at the moment, we have three, but Andy's gonna be retiring, so. We'll be back to two.
Never have enough tree wards.
Correct.
What's his experience?
He just going through all the training, it's extensive.
You learn about trees.
In favor? And Stephen Goff. Has completed his six-month probationary period, so I'm proud to make the motion to accept Elizabeth Lund. Department of Public Works Director's recommendation of Stephen Goff's satisfactory completion of his probationary period resulting in a full-time employment. So, that's, that is good, I believe her, any discussion? All those in favor? And unfortunately, uh. Dan Levin is resigned from U Services Committee. Who's in knowing here?
They did meet, and they decided to put the committee on hold, Rebecca's going to become a member of the H M board. Um, until they figure out. If they wanna. Get back here. So I thank everyone, Jen, Stephen, and Ingrid. Uh, I wish I could have made it, but it was a great Veterans Day ceremony, and it was super that, um. Both Emile Sadler and Russell Zenga were able to be honored by our town, so that was super. And then, uh, just want everybody to fill in the calendars, December thirteenth at four P M at Lock Cabin for our holiday celebration. Let me check this, uh. December thirteenth, so it's a Tuesday. Four P M for catered bitey and, uh, gift swap if you choose to partake.
Now. I've been going for a couple of years, uh, if you can make it, stop in, say hello. Work with some good people and everything, and, uh, it's a good time for you to get together and just.
Well, if you don't get there for it, it's not a problem.
So you could show up with time. Marketing down?
Oh, thank you so much.
Uh, I'll give it a two-hour window. Um, I also included a progress report for everybody. One thing that's, that's some potential is, uh, Titan Energy is looking with green skies at a solar array behind the firehouse. Um, they did find the big crop of ledge that Tom Doyle warned me about. And I told him to look at, so they're reconfiguring it to see if they can make it work, uh, but that could be a income generator for the town. And, um, I'm having trouble finding a replacement for, uh, Paul Stoll, who's retired. But I did. We did have one applicant for Brendan, but I, I did, uh. Find a company that actually supplies town planners that have decades of experience under a contract situation. A lot of times, that could be temporary until we find someone that wants a part-time planning position, but. Uh, the gentleman I talked to at our convention, I've known, and he, uh. He does quite a few towns in this area, uh, so he has a proposal to me on a review of Paul's, and I'll bring it to your attention.
So there's other towns in the area that don't have a full part-time, they just use.
They use a contracted vendor.
Sounds.
And then, um. Just the, only other thing to bring up the speed on is, um. The generator is underway at the senior center, and the masonry repointing is underway at the history place. And the solar panels are off this firehouse roof, and the roof is about to start, uh, they're re-siding the firehouse. And the cracked ceiling, uh, the senior center, the fire department, the town hall, and part of Mott Road is complete. So that's a rubber track seal we put down to extend the life of the roads. So there's a lot in the works, things are moving. What do you want to see?
I just wanted to make sure, when things are done, we take care of the, you can mop it here.
Will they go to the next page? Once they're done, they go to.
Or, if we can do some updates, because this one says sidewalk Friday, October twenty-eighth. Yeah, I know you did the sidewalk, so you just told us about the solar array type of thing, throw some, throw something in there, and next course of action. Okay, that's all. Because you could, you could end up with seventeen pages of things that you.
All these, of course, fine. Twenty-fifth celebration, fun very well.
It's all, it's all depth, it's always windier down by the lake. It's on depth. It's always windy here down by the lake. Yeah. All right, very good. So, uh. That's it, budget. No, no transfers? I made the motion, we approve the refunds totaling four hundred sixty-four dollars and fifty-one cents as presented. In favor? And the bills. I fully, excuse me, I moved to approve the payment bills totaling fifty-four thousand nine hundred and two dollars and thirty cents. Emergency, twenty-two, twenty-three regular credit card paychecks. Any discussion? To.
Nothing out of the ordinary.
My God, I thought we were buying Fred some new boots for fifteen hundred dollars. Eight hundred dollars for park outlets.
No, that was not, that was.
It's a reward, kind of a check for fifty-eight hundred dollars.
That must have been the electrical for the whole red part. Two, the parking lot and the exit area, we put in eight electric outlets. I think it was, I think we didn't pay them for electrical of the whole pavilion and all that until they completed. So I think they finally completed it.
Wow. Twenty-five anniversaries, food cost seventeen fifty?
And those special companies. I saw you buy those two. That was a hundred dollars.
I had to see the pictures in back. I'm sure I didn't even want. A thousand dollars to. Cracks in. Benefit Advisory for fifty-six hundred bucks.
So that's just talking to something? That looks like a train. For the town or I would assume not school, right?
The town.
Here's the explanation for. So two circuits to the forecastly existing bathhouse, down table walkway, install two switches. Conduit. Under the roadside of the bathhouse. Install ten gauge thin copper wire throughout the underground conduit and.
What was your question? The benefit?
Employee and benefit advisory. Lindbergh, Lindbergh and Riff.
Cheese and wine. That's wrong.
Did the law firm cheese in one?
I think it's got lateness.
Oh, it is.
They said to me, I have a law firm. I go, yeah, who do you use? Do we screw them and how?
Oh, yeah.
Just may.
No lawyer.
We only have two on board.
Well, Lindbergh and Riff is. Lindbergh and Riff. I think it's our. Weren't they originally at Bond Council and it's now Coleman and.
Tom.
Tom. I don't know what we're using Lindbergh or Riff for. That's something about.
Employee benefits.
You remember, they water.
Well, then if they're finance.
Financial consultant, West Hartford, Connecticut.
So Lindbergh for benefits, so they must hold one of our benefit items that we pay for.
After.
It's gonna be after. Listen, I know what Lindbergh was. That is our healthcare consultant, Joseph.
I was gonna say, is it the?
That's, that's Joseph. So he he gets to talk for our healthcare.
Motion on the floor, all those in favor of paying the bills?
Nice.
Those. Parents of citizens. The sheriff recognizes.
Joan Hill asked me to convey to the board. He just gratitude and thanks. Very nice job done on the last drink and painting of the. Was just. Morse in the charity. Also. For deepest thanks for Philip and Crabs in the meeting of history. Very, very.
Anything else?
It's all positive. They look at the school bus looks wonderful inside.
Yeah.
It looks nice.
Just very fantastic water and ice.
That was hard to find someone to do that. Jason looked and looked and looked.
Yeah, he finally did. Joan and Justin and I are working on setting up it to look like a one-room schoolhouse from the early nineteen hundreds.
Oh, wow.
We're getting there. We're meeting twenty minutes.
Sure you've picked the exact decade you're going to target?
Yeah, we we've gone back and forth.
Would you say, Mark?
No, the tables, the school desks are not all the same decade.
No, we're not. From the.
Why are you saying that?
I did say that.
You did not.
All right, board.
It's gonna look nice.
Board member comments. Chief is just come up here. Chief.
Yes, I just want to quickly wanted to thank everyone that was able to attend this past Saturday night to help and make our event another special and momentous occasion. So thank you guys for all that that came in, always for the support that you guys give us at the fire department. So thank you.
Gee, thanks for the invite. I I had a great time. I saw some people I hadn't seen in a long time. They have some nice conversations with old friends, new friends, so it was a great time.
It was fun. Sorry I missed it. Nice, nice choice of venue.
It's a nice spot.
Yeah. Just I guess I trouble finding it, but.
Um, yeah. You had trouble finding it?
Yeah, I did. We got there.
Yeah.
GPS on your phone.
I know, the GPS tape is there. That took us another place.
Board member comments.
I've got one. So, um, as you, as you all, I'm on the Hop River Preserve Management Committee along with Ann, Brendan and Joan, and we've met a couple of times so far. Uh, this month or earlier, actually this evening, um, just to say we're off to a good start. We've got some three major goals we're looking at, um, looking at infrastructure, historical resource and natural resource goals. So we've got some actions. We're looking up. Quotes and 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 different resources available to do certain things. We've got near-term projects that we're looking to put together and I'm obviously working with with the committee and coming to mark because we might need to make a request for for some, either budget or artwork for some of the near-term.
So I'm spent, sorry. No, I did that. I like that.
It is a cool.
Okay.
Yeah, it's really for the roadway and and removal of soda rock and we're looking at some of the near-term projects. Basic plant control, so.
Oh, you have a real problem.
Do you think so? We'll, we'll keep the board informed of what's going on, whatever requests are.
So you go.
There's a lot of base plan. There's a lot of our area.
You have a giant trimmer in you, so the arm of our.
Yeah, and the still, Japanese still grasses everywhere, which is really obnoxious.
It's all over my yard too.
Stunt is obnoxious. One nice thing about it is it pulls easy. You gotta do it right before it goes to seed.
Thank you. Nothing? Good to go? All right. Excellent. So at this time, I. The motion to adjourn the meeting, all those in favor? Eight oh two.